All right. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for joining us for today's Planning Commission meeting. Today's date is May 25, 2022, and the time is 9:30 a.m. Today's meeting is completely remote via Zoom. There are a couple of ways to participate in today's meeting. If your computer is equipped with a microphone, it is recommended that you participate via the Planning Commission Zoom link, which is posted on the Planning Department's homepage at SCCOplanning.com. Alternatively, if your computer is not equipped with a microphone, you may provide comment by telephone. The phone number is 669-900-6833. The collaboration code is 834-093107. This information is also posted on our website, in case you forget. During key points in today's meeting, time will be provided for members of the public to provide their testimony. Speakers will be muted until called on to speak. I will ask participants who wish to provide testimony to either remotely raise their hand by selecting the hand icon on the Zoom link, or if you're calling in by telephone, by remotely raising your hand by pressing star nine. I will call on participants by either your name or the last four digits of your telephone number. If participating via the Zoom link, when I call on you to speak, you'll see a pop-up on your screen that says unmute. Please accept the pop-up, state your name for the record, and provide your testimony. If calling in via telephone, you must unmute yourself by pressing star six. And I will remind everybody of these commands later in the meeting. If at any time you have difficulty connecting to today's meeting via the Zoom link or by calling in via telephone, please email Michael Lam at Michael.Lam, that's L-A-M, at Santa Cruz County.us. He will be checking his email periodically throughout the meeting, and he is ready to assist anyone who has difficulty. And those are the instructions. It's like we have the Planning Commissioners with us today. I will now turn it over to the Planning Commission Chair, Tim Gordon. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning, Jocelyn. Thank you so much for the intro. Appreciate it. And good morning, everyone. Today is May 25, and I welcome everyone to this hearing of the Santa Cruz County Planning Commission. It's 9:32, and we can call this meeting to order. Could we please start with a roll call, Ms. Drake?
Yes. Commissioner Dan?
Here.
Commissioner Lazenby?
Here.
Commissioner Villalante?
Here.
All right. Commissioner Shepherd? Did not see her earlier. Not present at this time. And Chair Gordon?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we move on to item, Agenda Item Two? Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda today?
No, not today, Chair.
Okay, great. Item number three, Declaration of Ex parte Communications. Do any commissioners have anything to declare today? Okay, none today. Great. Moving along. Oral Communications, Item Number Four. This is the time when the members of the public have an opportunity to speak on items that are not on today's agenda. Ms. Drake, do you have any members of the public that would like to speak at this time?
All right. Chair, I'm seeing one hand raised. And the phone number is 2915. Good morning. Please state your name for the record. You have two minutes. Good morning.
Morning. This is Becky Steinbruner. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good morning, Becky.
You. Good morning. I would like to make your commission aware that there is Santa Cruz County Plan working under the auspices of state mandate put in place by legislation known as SB 552 that will require the county to come up with a plan regarding consolidation of domestic and small water systems. Part of a required drought response plan. And I want to make your commission aware of that work that is ongoing and has to be done by October to present to the Board of Supervisors and then ultimately to the State Water Board by the end of the year. I think this is a big, uh, big step in our county and kind of a heavy hand by the state. I'm quite concerned about it, but it fits sort of hand in glove with what we see as the state mandates for RENA numbers, requiring large numbers of how residential units to be built. But we still have this issue of water supply. So I see this move to consolidate as a way to address that issue, water availability, simply combining larger systems, smaller systems, private well owners to make water, in essence, available. I'm concerned about that, and I just want to make your aware of that work ongoing. Santa Cruz County LAFCO also is in process of doing a very extensive sphere and service review report of the water purveyors in Santa Cruz County, and that report will be due out in August. So watch for that.
Thank you, Becky.
Toronto's very thorough. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda? If so, please press your, um, press star nine on your telephone or raise your hand if using the Zoom link. And I am not seeing any other hands raised, Chair, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Great. Thank you so much. And so then we can close oral communications portion of the hearing and move on to our next item, approval of the minutes from the last meeting. And would any commissioners like to make comments on the minutes or motion?
This is Commissioner Lazenby, and I will move approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazenby. I can second that. I was here. However, so we can take a vote on this. Ms. Drake, I'm not sure on this one because two commissioners were not here last week unless they've reviewed it and could approve it.
Present at the meeting, although it wasn't. Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, great. So we have enough. So then at this point, we can, excuse me, take a vote on the motion. And all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstained? Commissioner, pardon, abstained. Thank you. So with that, the motion passes. Thank you. And we can move on to Agenda Item Number Six. This is a study session to consider the sustainability policy and regulatory update. This is just to make sure everyone in the public's aware and kind of talk about the process a little bit more globally. This is the first in a number of study sessions that we're going to have to look at the new sustainability update. We'll talk about schedule of the upcoming meetings later in the agenda. Just wanted, you know, to stay upfront. We're not really sure how long this might take. It might be pretty lengthy at times, and some other times maybe not as much. However, today, we do want to make sure we work in a lunch break at 11:30. So if we end up going that long, we'll take a break right at 11:30 for a 30-minute lunch. And then I just wanted to be clear on the study sessions for the public in particular, that it's going to kind of go in this order. We're going to, excuse me, here, a presentation from Planning Department staff, and then it comes back to the Commission for discussion and immediate questions. And we'll hear public comment. Today, the public comment portion will be given three minutes per person to speak. After that, we'll bring it back to the Commission for final discussion. And then there's no action needed on today's agenda item. It's informational and just a study session. So just so everyone in the public understands kind of how this process works on these, that's what we'll be doing. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jocelyn, but otherwise, I appreciate a staff report this time.
Sounds good. We have Natisha Williams with us this morning. And I believe she will be providing a PowerPoint presentation. Good morning, Natisha.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jocelyn, I'm actually going to get us started this morning. This is Stephanie Hansen, Assistant Director in the new CDI Community Development and Infrastructure Department. I've been working with the Sustainability and Special Projects or Policy Team. I think we're shifting to that. For about four years on getting this project launched and out to the, into the world. And we're very happy to be here today for, as Chair Gordon mentioned, the first of several study sessions. With me today is Natisha Williams. She's a senior planner with our group, and she's going to help me present the material today. We'd appreciate if we could kind of get through the presentation, and then we'll answer any Commissioner questions that, that come up. Today's session is really an overview of the whole project where we're deferring kind of the details of the general plan and the code to the upcoming sessions, and we'll review a schedule of those sessions in the presentation today. I wanted to mention that our project team also consists of Annie Murphy, who is with us today on the call, and will be able to help answer any questions. And Anais Schenk, who specializes in transportation, will also be able to help us with any questions that come up on those items. Along the way, we've received a lot of help and feedback from other county divisions. We want to recognize Michaela Lopez in the Housing Division for all the help with the Spanish translations. The design guidelines were created by a design firm called Mig, who helped with the Pleasure Point work a couple of years ago. And also county staff worked on that quite a bit. The EIR is being prepared by another consultant, Dudek, and our transportation consultant has been Kim Lee Horn. Next slide. As I mentioned, this presentation is the first of several that we're going to be conducting with the Commission this spring. The purpose will be to start with the background and vision for the project to kind of get us all on the same page with what we're trying to accomplish here. And we'll follow a discussion on kind of key topic areas and an overview of the EIR. We'll discuss project outreach and schedule and provide some additional resources. On June 8th, we'll return to the Commission with the Built Environment Element and the Design Guidelines and Amendments related to county code and zoning maps. Generally, that'll be about kind of residential and commercial development. On June 22nd, we'll be discussing transportation and parks and recreation and public facilities. And on July 13th, we're scheduling the Code Modernization Program, Agriculture and Resources, and an overview of the draft EIR. The Sustainability Update has four main components. Amendments to the General Plan, which includes our local coastal program. Amendments to the county code. New county design guidelines to, to help with new development and amendments to our land use and zoning maps. We'll discuss each of these components in more detail in this presentation. The Sustainability Update project has several key goals. First, the project implements the Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan. This is a planning study that was adopted by, or excuse me, accepted by the Board of Supervisors in 2014. Second, the project aims to update, streamline, and modernize the zoning code and other related county code sections. This project also addresses projected growth. Santa Cruz County, like all California jurisdictions, is required under state planning law to plan for and accommodate a certain amount of population, housing, and economic growth. So this update of the general plan anticipates a 20-year growth period from 2020 to 2040. And finally, consistency with newly adopted county plans and new state legislation also informs the project. Planning law requires jurisdictions to reflect and be consistent with the variety of state laws, as well as regional plans adopted for the area. And if the jurisdiction is near the coast, the California Coastal Act. At the local level, the project will be consistent with the county's strategic plan, the Climate Action Strategy, Economic Vitality Study, our Park Strategic Plan, and the current Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Program, as well as our Long Range Facilities Plan and the Public Works Design Criteria. Project is also consistent with the recently adopted Active Transportation Plan for Santa Cruz County focuses on pedestrian and bicycle facility needs. At the regional level, the project is consistent with the Association of Monterey Bay Government's Sustainable Communities Plan, as well as the Regional Transportation Commission's Regional Transportation Plan. At the state level, we're meeting guidelines for SB 375 Sustainable Communities, the Complete Streets Bill, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, and current state requirements for general plans that now include environmental justice requirements. Those are new, and we'll talk more about that. And then additionally, the project is consistent with the Coastal Act and the California Coastal Commission's Strategic Plan. By way of background, the Sustainable Santa Cruz Plan focused mostly on new development in the county's coastal urban areas, particularly our higher-growth areas of Live Oak and SoCal. The plan was accepted in 2014. The development of the plan involved intensive public participation and a very intensive visioning process. A series of 16 community workshops were held throughout the county between 2012 and 2014. Topics of those meetings included overall vision, as well as plans for certain focus areas. There was also advisory groups, business involvement, and many stakeholder interviews. Result of these meetings was a vision for urban development in Santa Cruz County and guiding principles to achieve that vision. These guiding principles have been carried over into the new draft general plan and address issues and goals such as focused development, transportation choices, open space, housing options, economic vitality, inclusive decision-making, unique community character, governmental coordination, and fiscal responsibility. The Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan also resulted in recommendations for land use and transportation. These are carried over into our Sustainability Update project as well. These include concentrating infill development within the urban services line near transportation corridors and high-activity areas, developing a multimodal transportation network, which we will get into in an upcoming meeting a little bit more. Updating development reviews to consider vehicle miles traveled, as well as modern parking standards, establishing new zone districts and standards to encourage multifamily housing and mixed-use and modern workplace, and supporting the development of medical facilities, particularly along the SoCal Drive corridor. The project also incorporates the code modernization effort that began in 2013. The code was originally adopted in the 1950s, and it's been updated in a piecemeal fashion, which has led to real complications in the code, complex land use requirements, and so forth. So as a result, land use regulations have become increasingly complex, and so part of this project is aimed at simplifying the process a bit. In 2014, we've recognized the need to make county code regulations more user-friendly. County staff engaged with the community to identify how the code could be, could be improved to better serve the public. In particular, we identified a need to update the county's development permit framework, as well as a need to modernize various agricultural regulations and to reflect modern needs and practices. There was a series of community meetings that were held then throughout the county to further refine these regulations. In 2015 and 2016, the Board of Supervisors reviewed a number of the draft regulations related to the new permit framework, agricultural regulations, and establishment of new standards and zone districts that had been identified in the Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan and directed staff to continue to work on these amendments and combine them into a complete project and address them in the upcoming Environmental Impact Report. So this project fulfills that board direction. Now I'm going to turn it over to Natisha, and she's going to delve into the amendments a little bit more.
Thanks, Stephanie. All right. So amendments to the general plan include a new introduction, land use, and circulation elements that incorporate a new emphasis on sustainability, as well as integration of the vision and guiding principles that Stephanie just went over, and the land use and transportation recommendations from the SSCC. It also includes new population, housing, and employment targets for 2040, as well as integrated strategies and policies from various local, regional, and state plans and regulations. The land use element was renamed the Built Environment Element and integrates existing Chapters Two Land Use and Chapter Eight Community Design with a focus on residential and commercial development. The Built Environment Element includes a new urban high-density flex residential designation. And this new RUHF designation accommodates a greater intensity of residences along and near transportation corridors and key activity centers within the county's urban services line, creating some opportunities for infill housing available to residents at various income levels and household sizes. These and other key policies related to the built environment will be reviewed in greater detail at the next Planning Commission study session that's scheduled for June 8th. The circulation element, Chapter Three of the general plan, is being renamed Access and Mobility to reflect a focus on movement of people rather than the movement of vehicles. The chapter includes a new layered transportation network concept that prioritizes certain types of users on specific streets. And this layering approach provides a greater quality, higher-quality experience than an approach that would attempt to accommodate everyone within a limited space. This element addresses all kinds of transportation modes, transit, micro-mobility, pedestrians and bicyclists, and a new list of transportation system improvements to guide future projects. The concepts of the Built Environment Element are strongly linked to the transportation concepts and the access and mobility element in order to focus new development along these transportation corridors and promote the goals of sustainable development. The project also partially amends Chapter Five Conservation and Open Space, which has been renamed Agriculture, Resources, and Conservation. And the changes in this chapter focus on updating agricultural timber and water and groundwater policies. Partial amendments are also proposed for Chapter Seven, the Parks, Recreation, and Public Facilities element, to be consistent with the Park Strategic Plan and to ensure that county facilities are adequate to accommodate projected growth. And we'll be going into greater detail on the new policies and regulations related to transportation, parks, and public facilities at the third study session, which is scheduled for June 22nd. And new agriculture and resource policies will be covered in the fourth study session scheduled for July 13th. Other general plan chapters will not be changed substantively, if at all. And these chapters include Chapter Four Housing, which is scheduled to be amended in 2023. Chapter Six, Public Safety, which was amended by the board in 2020 based on the Commission's recommendations and is currently pending certification by the Coastal Commission. And Chapter Nine, Noise, which was amended in 2019. The second component of the project is amendments to the county code. These amendments include updates to Title Twelve Building, Title Thirteen, Planning and Zoning Regulations, which includes changes to zoning, design, and coastal regulation chapters, as well as a new parking and circulation chapter, and Title Eighteen Procedures. And there's also some small associated changes in Titles Five and Fifteen of the code. Key changes to the code include a new permit system that replaces the current processing levels with more descriptive permit names that are commonly used in other communities. There's also the creation of the new Residential Flex Zone District to implement the RUHF land use designation from the general plan. And there's a new Workplace Flex Zone District C3 that provides centers and employment with flexible mixture of commercial and light industrial land uses to meet the daily needs of workers. And code updates also include new agriculture and event regulations, revised design review standards, and revised development standards for several districts, including new mixed-use standards. Overall, all these code amendments serve to both modernize the code and align with the changes being made to the general plan, LCP. And updates related to the new zoning districts will be reviewed in greater detail at the next study session on June 8th. And code modernization will be reviewed in greater detail at the fourth study session scheduled for July 13th. The project also includes the adoption of new Santa Cruz County design guidelines. The guidelines include best practices for building design, site development, and connecting private development to the streetscape. And this document is intended to guide the design of all projects, but especially focuses on multifamily residential and commercial development in the urban area. There's also design guidelines specifically for the Pleasure Point Commercial Corridor, which is included as an appendix to this document. And finally, the project includes targeted land use changes and rezoning on 23 parcels located throughout the county. And there's two types of land use changes. The first type are amendments to eliminate inconsistencies between the general plan maps and the zoning maps. And this is for 13 parcels. The county is required by state law to ensure consistency between the general plan land use designations and the zoning maps. So no intensification of land use is proposed as a result of these corrections. The second type of map amendments includes targeted rezoning of 10 key opportunity sites along transportation corridors to implement the new RUH Residential Flex general plan designation and the new Residential Flex Zone District. And we'll be providing more detail on these map amendments, as well as the design guidelines at the next study session on June 8th. So this slide indicates the overall focus growth strategy of the Sustainability Update. Growth is focused within the urban services line, which is indicated in blue. In the unincorporated coastal urban area, growth is planned around key transportation corridors. And outside of this urban area, the county's open space, agriculture, and rural residential lands would continue to be protected. Sustainable development is envisioned in this project, as envisioned in this project, is built on the three pillars. Sustainable development is envisioned in this project as envisioned in this project is built on the three pillars of sustainability. Environment, economy and equity. And overall, the sustainability update plans for development that can accommodate the county's projected growth. While maintaining and improving the environment, economy and quality of life for those who live and work here. Like all jurisdictions, the county will grow in the next 20 years and beyond. And the general plan built environment element county code, Santa Cruz County design guidelines plan for this growth. By applying sustainable design principles to all scales of development from the regional scale down to the individual buildings and sites. And like Stephanie mentioned earlier, environmental justice is a new topic area that must be incorporated into general plans in California. Either as a separate chapter or as policies within each chapter per recent state law. This important topic is addressed throughout the general plan with policies addressing environmental justice. Topics denoted with EJ and and it's also listed in general plan appendix E. Environmental justice means equitable protection from environmental and health hazards for everyone. Environmental justice themes that are addressed with the new general plan policies include pollution exposure and air quality. Equitable access to safe and sanitary homes, food, transportation and other public services and facilities. Physical activity opportunities and community engagement opportunities. As well as improvements and programs that address the needs of disadvantaged communities. And disadvantaged communities are populations that are disproportionately affected by environmental pollution or hazards. Have high concentrations of low income, high rates of employment, low levels of home homeownership. High rent burden, sensitive populations or low levels of educational attainment. The county used several definitions when mapping disadvantaged communities so as to be as inclusive as possible. And the county's disadvantaged communities are primarily located. Around Watsonville and Live Oak, as you can see from this map on this slide. Which can, this map can also be found in the general plan, chapter two, figure two dash 13. Additional fringe or legacies communities located in Davenport. And along highway nine and outside of city borders have the potential to be defined as disadvantaged communities as well. Based on environmental and resource issues. As required by state law, the county has prepared an environmental impact report or EIR to analyze the impacts of the sustainability update projects. The EIR analyzes topics as required by the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. Some topics that need special evaluation in the EIR. Include addressing impacts to aesthetics, agriculture, cultural resources, land use, population and housing. Public services and utilities, water supply and groundwater and transportation and we'll review these in more detail. Along with significant impacts of the project on at the fourth study session scheduled for July 13. The document evaluates transportation impacts in terms of vehicle miles traveled or VMT as required by SEQA. VMT is a measurement of the number of miles that people are traveling in vehicles. And as a metric related to the production of greenhouse gases, but operational information like. Levels of service is also provided for informational purposes. Although we're no longer able to consider operational impacts as SEQA impacts. The draft EIR was released on April 14th and made available for public review and comment on the county's SEQA document website at the address on this slide. And hard copies are also available on the fourth floor of the county building located at 701 Ocean Street. As well as select libraries throughout the county. And these documents will remain available through the 45 day comment period, which ends on May 31st at 5pm. After the comment period, a final EIR will be prepared to address any comments. Prior to adoption of the amendments and now Stephanie. Will review a little bit about the public outreach conducted for the project and the project schedule.
Thank you Natasha. We just wanted to kind of review the the resources that are available to the public and the commission. The best way for the public to become more familiar with this project is through the project website. Current drafts of the general plan chapters, county code, design guidelines and map amendments are all available on that webpage. Hard copies of project documents are also available for review at the county building fourth floor as well as the. Downtown and Capitola libraries. The what's included page on the website provides a summary of proposed amendments by project document. You can also find changes organized by topic. And corresponding fact sheets on eight topic areas. Fact sheets highlight key policies and provide reference to the documents that address those. Policies and the fact sheets are also available in Spanish. A project survey was launched. In early March in order to gain feedback from the public on policy specific. Topics and on key changes within topic areas with links to more information on the website. As of March 13th, the county had received 142 surveys and the results are included in exhibit C of your packet. The project website also includes a comment portal. Which provides an open forum for the public to submit their comments on the project. To date, 50 comments have been received. Either through the portal or through email. Sorry, there's a 50 comments through the email and 22 comments through the portal and they continue to come in. These are included in your packet as exhibits A and B. We also launched a social media campaign. And email outreach has been extensive since the project documents were released in February. Each of those emails that you probably hopefully receive are going out to more than 3,000 people every time. The list includes stakeholder groups, local agencies, community organizations and those who have asked to be on our. Email lists. Seven evening community meetings were held this spring that focused on various project topics. Community meetings had over 160 attendees. And summaries of questions and comments from each meeting have been attached to the staff report as exhibit D. Several polls were released during the meeting to engage the community members and collect public feedback on specific policy topics. And poll questions and responses are also included in exhibit D. All of the meetings are recorded and available on. The project website on the Get Involved page, including Spanish translations for the first two meetings. Finally, project staff can be emailed at any time at the email shown on this slide. Now just a minute on our schedule. We wanted to show you the timeline for the project. The amendments were made available to the public at the end of February. And project documents are available for review now as we've mentioned. In addition to the study sessions, we had the. We're also doing study sessions at various county commissions, including. The Housing Advisory Commission and the Latino Affairs Commission. Which will be presented in Spanish week from today on June 1st. Study sessions will continue through the summer. Following these sessions, the final EIR will be prepared and this EIR will address the public comments that were collected. During the comment period on the draft EIR. And then after that, we'll return to your commission in August for public hearings and a formal recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors hearings are scheduled to be held. In October through December. And after adoption at the board, most of the amendments will need to go to the. Coastal Commission for certification because they're part of our LCP. So our recommendation today was to conduct a study session and receive an overview of this project. We also wanted to confirm the schedule of additional study sessions and public hearings. For the amendments, study sessions are today, June 8th, July 13th and I think there's a typo. On there. The June 22 is not correct. And then we're looking at two scheduled public hearings, August 24th and September 14th. Before the project would go to the board. So that's the overview and we're happy to answer any questions that the commission may have. But just noting that we'll get into a lot more detail on the individual topic areas at the upcoming. At the upcoming study sessions, so thank you very much and we're happy to. As I said, answer any questions, thank you.
Great, thank you so much Stephanie and Natasha, that was really good and I know this is so much information and it's hard to consolidate. You did awesome job and it's really clear, cleared up a lot of questions that I had already. So I'm really grateful for hard work and the great presentation. Do any of the commissioners want to ask any specific questions now before you go to any public comment?
Yeah, did you just say that there is no study session on June 22nd?
So the June 22nd date is correct, it's just in the wrong order.
Okay. And then are there a lot of members of the public that will speak? If so, I'll wait. I'll hold my questions and comments and hear from the public.
I'm not seeing a great deal of members of the public with us so far.
I'd be happy to hold off on my questions also if we wanted to let members of the public go and then we can talk. We might have a lengthy conversation here if we get into it. Would other commissioners be all right with that? Great, let's let's do that, let's move to public comment and just let the public speak and then we can move on from there. This, just a reminder, members of the public have three minutes to speak on this topic today.
And Chair Gordon, if I may, before I move over to. Calling on members of the public, if you wouldn't mind working on dropping one of your connections to the meeting. We are only seeing your photo because you're connected twice, yeah. So if you can disconnect from one of your. One of your devices, then it'll run the the video feed because right now we're just seeing your photo.
Put you on my phone here.
Okay.
Because. My computer didn't think I had a microphone today. Loves to do that to me. Give me one sec here.
That would be great and I will. While you're working on that, maybe we'll hear from the members of the public.
Great, thank you.
Okay, alright, great, so. Just wanted to remind folks that if you wish to provide comment on what you heard today. On the sustainability update. To raise your hand by pressing star nine on your telephone or remotely or raising your hand using the hand icon. On Teams or Zoom, sorry. Okay. I am seeing a hand raised with the last four digits of 2915 again, so. Please restate your name for the record, even though we have heard from you previously and you have three minutes now to speak, good morning.
Morning again, this is Becky Steinbruner, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning Becky.
Thank you. Thank you for this this overview. I am concerned that the EIR public comment time will close next Tuesday. Before your commission even has the opportunity to review it publicly and to. Provide your input, so I and I know other people have also requested an extension of public comment time for the EIR. Hopefully it will be past the July 6th. Planning Commission study session for that topic. But I really hope that the public comment time will be extended because this is a lot and the EIR is even more. So I'm hoping that will, that the public will be accommodated. I would like to request, and I did this in the public meetings that were held. Earlier this spring, the maps shown in the the document are very difficult to read. In your slide today, slide number three. That is difficult to really understand where those areas are for the intensive development. I would would request again that there be magnified maps or larger versions or or cutouts of them somehow. That will help the public better identify where these areas will be. I'm also interested in knowing the exact locations of these 10 parcels that you described that are being dis. Targeted for the the new res flex in development. In this, and I know this will get into the. Transportation session more, but again, I am becoming more aware of the number of people in our community that. That walk, that are blind or have visual impairments. And so I'm asking again that the. There be in this work, some type of requirement for standardization of pedestrian crosswalk signals. That they are in the same location within the intersections, that they have a sound so that they can be located. That there is some regulation in terms of the volume so that they are not turned down. To the point that they cannot be audible over traffic noise. And also I've I've got some concerns about. That and the the Dutch design for the intersection, which will come up later. In closing, I see on my screen, I can see the screen, but I can't hear you, so I'm coming in on telephone for audio. That this is being recorded and I want to confirm that and that. This recording of today's meeting will be put on your website for those who cannot be here today. I think that concludes my comment, thank you very much.
Thank you Becky. Alright. Going back to the attendees, again, if you wish to comment on this. Study session item today, please raise your hand on your phone by pressing star nine or the hand icon on the Zoom app. I'm not seeing any additional hands raised at this time, Chair.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's, let me see, we will, first off, we can close the public comment portion then and I'm going to try and get my tech fixed here and let me see if this works. Okay, can you see me now?
It looks like we can, yes.
Okay, there we go, thanks. Sorry, I could see myself on the other screen, so I didn't realize that no one could see me, I apologize for that. Okay, great, so then we can bring it back to the commission at this time for further. Questions and discussion and go from there, do any commissioners want to get started?
I can be brave and go first. Commissioner Lazenby, did you, did you, were you ready to go?
No, no, go ahead.
So I just, I want to thank staff first of all. For the enormous amount of work that's gone into this project. I also had the opportunity to attend virtually or watch online the. The public meetings that we had beginning, I think in March and I just want to thank you for making them so convenient to watch. Kind of on your own time whenever it was convenient, so I feel like I've gotten a pretty good. General overview with those coupled with today. And it's an enormous amount of material and so I will just. Say that I've only begun to really dig into the details. And so some of my questions, I'm really going to hold off until the next study sessions when I've actually had a chance to. Read the details and not waste your time asking questions that are actually in the in the documents. And then, so I'll just start by saying, I think one of the main things that has struck me. is how important this is, what we're doing, and how distressing it is that there was only one member of the public to comment on this. And so I think maybe we should try to put our heads together to figure out how to, how to get more participation. And I know we have had good participation in the public meetings and the comments and I've seen the surveys. When this has come up a few times with the public, I am telling them this is the most important land use change that we are going through in forty years. And so I feel like we need to do something more to make sure people understand just how significant this is and some of the changes that are, that are being proposed. And I think we're going in a really good direction in general. Well, that was just one general comment. So, so on my specific comments, I really, I started with the things that, that are interesting to me. So I'm not really going in any, in any order. But I, I started looking at the design guidelines and specifically for the residential flex in the urban high density, the new zoning district that's being proposed, which I think is great. One of the things that has always been important to me on this commission is making sure that when we build high density development, that we preserve open space. And I think that that's one element I'd like us to think more about as we move forward, especially with the RF zone district. In the design guidelines, specifically, I think this is mentioned on page thirteen, C six, residential flex sites, that, that it's, there is no requirement for open space. There's some requirements for communal open space, but I think that there's something that says whenever feasible. And I'm sorry, I don't have it right up in front of me because I don't have a printed copy of any of this. So I think that that's what I'm looking for is some stricter requirements about open space. And I actually see this as an environmental justice issue, that if we're building high density, high density housing for folks, we have to ensure that this is quality development that's going to attract families that will live their lives in these, in these buildings. And so that means providing spaces both for kids to play, requirements for outdoor space. And I could see maybe being flexible with this if it's within a quarter mile of a county park or designated open space for recreation. But I think that it's really important that we retain, or we begin to require more open space for, especially for those high, high density developments. Let's see. Oh, another, another comment that I had moving forward, when we get into the zoning discussion for chapter thirteen specifically, I think also for this zone district in particular, the RF zone, it would be really helpful for me and maybe for other commissioners to integrate how the state density bonuses are going to intersect with this new zoning code and the allowances. And then also to have kind of a deep discussion or description of one of the significant changes being proposed. And that is that it's being proposed that developers can calculate gross site area instead of net developable area. This is one of these esoteric components that I think is pretty consequential. And so I think it's, it'd be really helpful if we all can have a good understanding of what that's going to mean going forward.
Commissioner Dan, I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Daniel. Can you just repeat that last point? Maybe just kind of expand on that just a bit?
About the development between net site and gross site?
Yes, yes.
I would rather have planning staff describe.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I'm taking notes and I just wanted to make sure I got your thoughts down correctly. Thank you.
My understanding is that the way we have, the way we do it now is that there's, there's the whole site. But then we only look at, for development purposes, we only look at the portion of the site that is developable. So maybe like part of the site's on a steep slope and, and our code doesn't allow you to develop on more than a thirty percent slope. So you can't use that part of the parcel when you calculate how many units you can build. And my understanding is the way that we're, what is being proposed is that you will be able to use the whole site and calculating how many units you can build. At least that's the way I'm understanding it right now.
Yeah, let me see if I can clarify a little bit. Yeah, you're doing really good. First of all, I want to kind of be clear about what the sustainability update goal is, right? Which is we want to make the most efficient use of our urban land as we possibly can in a way that makes the most sense and integrates into the community in the best possible way. Hence the design guidelines to help with kind of impacts. When you're calculating density and the developments that we've been getting, we're not reaching maximum density ever. We just don't get there unless you have a density bonus built into a particular project. And even then, so part of, yes, part of what we are talking about in the urban lands is moving from a calculation that allows you to consider the number of units based on an entire parcel. However, just to be clear, that doesn't mean we're not protecting critical areas, right? There's still, we're not really, for the most part, touching any environmental buffers. We didn't dig into Title sixteen with this project. So all of the provisions that protect our environmental resources are still intact. And it's really important for people to understand. And I would also say that even though we're talking about, these are kind of incremental increases in density, really. We're, we're talking about smaller changes that that are really aren't going to result in massive amounts of growth, just building in a little bit more units. And, and it's important to remember as we do that, that all of our other zoning regulations are in place, right? We'll review more of this as we get to the next session. But there's, you know, there's height, there's setbacks, there's requirements in the design guidelines to address massing. And all those things will continue to control for the, the impacts to the community, even if we are allowing a few more units. And the other pretty important thing I want to, to mention is back to the whole arena discussion, right? So the sustainability update has been in in process here for, I don't know, eight, nine years. It's been quite a while. And at the time it started and all of, you know, the sustainable Santa Cruz County plan and all of the work that we're doing, establishment of, of our standards. At the time, we were looking at a much lower arena. Now we're going to be looking at arena that is approximately three and a half times the number of units. And so we really are going to have to find ways to integrate more units into our community without, hopefully, without extending the urban services line or impacting some of our beautiful protected areas in the county. So building those units into the fabric in a, in a way that really allows us again to make more efficient use of lands in an infill capacity is, is the best way for us to control how we accommodate those units. And so these changes are tweaking almost of regulations to try to build that in, in an incremental and sustainable way that doesn't result in massive crazy changes. We're not becoming the city of Santa Cruz or San Jose. Right? So I guess I wanted to just make sure we all have the same context here as we move forward. And yes, we will talk more about, about those issues that you raised. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Let me just comment on that. And let me just like establish that when I'm asking questions or making comments about making sure to include open space in the, in the residential flex does not mean I am opposed to it in concept at all. It only means that I want to ensure that we're going to be building quality units for the people that are going to be living there. And, you know, I mean, I guess it's all based on perspective. I think it is quite a huge change to have the RF zone district from where we have before. We're going from, you know, twenty units an acre to forty units an acre. That is a huge change. That doesn't mean that it's bad. In fact, I think that that's good. But I don't think that it's correct to say that it's not a huge change. And I, and I think that it's important for the public to be aware of this. And I think that there's probably a lot of support out there to go in this direction. And I was here for all of the sustainable Santa Cruz meetings and the creation of that plan. I remember that process. I remember the plan. And I, there are so many great things in the plan and to see some of that being built into this finally is really gratifying, actually. Some of the new, especially the transportation elements of it, the proposed new roads. Anyway, yeah, a lot of it, a lot of good stuff. So in one last, a couple of last things, in the design guidelines, I think it would be important to have renderings of what some of the RF developments could look like. A lot of the photos were, were great. But I don't think that any of them represented, represented what could be built in that zone district and how that could look beautiful and fit into a neighborhood and just what that could look like. I think that I didn't see any photos of any structures that were higher than, than three stories. And then lastly, in the plan, I can't even remember where I read this, probably somewhere in the introduction in reference to measure J. It's, it's indicated that it was an initiative and this is a picky thing, but it was actually a referendum. So. So thank you. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thanks for those comments. We appreciate them.
Really quickly, before we hear from other commissioners, I just wanted to make sure I, that we promote Annie. I see Annie. I'm going to see if I can promote her. I see Annie had her hand raised, Stephanie. So I wanted to make sure we had her on the panelist roster here. All right. Annie is now a panelist. I just want to make sure she is able to speak. She might have had some comments there.
Yes, thank you, Jocelyn. I just wanted to add a few comments on to what Stephanie mentioned. Regarding the net versus gross density, there is currently a complex approach, like many aspects of our code, for, for, we do base on net developable land. But there's a system whereby credit is provided to many of the categories of undevelopable land, such as thirty percent slopes in urban areas or repairing corridors. So, so the change from gross net developable land to gross density is actually much less than it might seem. And we can certainly go into more detail on that when we discuss the built environment, but I did want to mention that. And then in terms of open space, we can certainly clarify that in the design guideline perhaps. But there is a requirement for res flex that ten percent of the land be devoted to open space. There's no requirement for, for lot coverage. So that is a change. But there is still a requirement for ten percent open space, I think, to sort of acknowledge that it is important for everyone to have access to open space, including on those res flex sites. So I want to make those two comments.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Any commissioners, any other commissioners want to go next? Maybe Commissioner Lazenby, where are you up next?
Well, Chair, I will defer to other commissioners. I think I can get my head around these issues better by hearing the comments from others and especially the clarification by staff. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate it. And Commissioner Vialante, did you want to say anything before I jump in?
Yeah, I was waiting for Commissioner Lazenby. I just had some small comments. I just want to thank staff for their, their work on this. As Commissioner Dan mentioned, this has been years in the making. I watched as the sustainability plan was developed and as well as the code modernization. And it's really gratifying to see that work incorporated into what is a very comprehensive update to the county code. That's been, you know, decades in the making, to be honest. Like, as she mentioned, we haven't seen these types of revisions in a long time. And, you know, the second district, which I represent, includes a lot of the agricultural community in particular that will really see the benefit of some of, I think some of these revisions that don't often get some of the attention. But we have a code that wasn't really consistent really with the agricultural practices that we see today, things like our ag tourism and our ag education, as well as even things as simple as farm stands. So I agree with Commissioner Dan. I will leave some of my comments when we get into some of these more specific pieces of the code, including, you know, the, the the design standards as well as the ER and things like that. But I just wanted to draw attention to some of the code that often doesn't get our attention. Because we, we need to talk about housing and it's important that we talk about those design standards. But I just wanted to appreciate the work and that component of the code revisions as well and the agricultural code modernization. Because they mean so much to the economic drivers of our community as well. I, I'm excited to see some of these divisions that develop a housing, which can lead to some of these kind of equity issues about providing housing where people live through having higher densities in our community. I agree with Commissioner Dan. I, I think it's important as we develop this that we consider the idea that, I was interested in one of our polls that talked about what people want within their walking distance. I was surprised that one of the things they talked about wasn't parks and open spaces. And I think it's important that we keep our community green, that we preserve our urban forests through things like that and providing open space and what that can look like on parcels is really important as we move forward. But I just really want to take some time to appreciate staff for all their work on this. And I'll wait to get into the specifics. So I'll defer to Commissioner Gordon as he has additional questions. But thank you to staff so much for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Vialante. Yes, I obviously, I want to thank everyone also. This is really complicated, really big update for us as a county, which I'm super excited about. And good opportunity to clean up a lot of things in the code and get the community's input on, on zoning and other items. And it's so much better to do it at this level instead of the project specific level. And so I'm really glad that we're able to, to do this. And I just kind of second everything else that the other commissioner said. I did have a few comments and questions and, and maybe a little more specific than I should be at this point, but I might say them anyway, just so that, you know, when they do come up at the next opportunity to talk about some of these, that we can, you know, have some more time to think through it. And again, and, you know, mine aren't in any specific order necessarily as far as the packet went today. But, so I'll just kind of jump in. Are there area specific plans that are going to get revised as well with this? Like, you know, SoCal or, you know, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there. Thank you. Yeah, there's several area plans. We're not revising them. There are some policies that call for when you have conflicts, how those things are handled. Some of them are quite old and could probably use a revision. But it was a little bit outside the scope of this plan and really needs to be a whole separate effort that involves the community. So, so we've left them intact and except the one thing to say is that there are policies and regulations and the design guidelines that are really meant to implement the, the pleasure point commercial corridor. uh, the pleasure point commercial corridor, uh, plant. So that's the one, the one area where we really are, are doing some work to, to implement that, that plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's good to know. Um, and then with this, there's a, I know today's general overview, there's some things to come like design guidelines. And I guess my question was when we're going to see like the, the new zoning map? Does that happen in this process or is that next year with general plan updates or?
Yeah, so, um, the, this, this project is really meant to, uh, set up the regulatory and policy framework. Uh, but we did see an opportunity to, um, make some, some zoning changes, particularly to start to get the RF, um, the residential flex zone, uh, start to get implemented. Um, so we, we've targeted a few properties along our transportation corridors um, that we think are opportunity sites where redevelopment could occur. Um, and, and so it's a very limited amount of zoning map, um, and general plan map changes related to that. And we will go over that in our, um, our next session on, on June.
So this is just this whole sustainability process, just concerning those few properties that are already mentioned. We're not like rezoning the whole county at this point.
No, uh-uh, no, mom, but I will say in kind of creating some new districts, there's not only the residential flex, there's a new workplace flex um, district that's being created. There are, will be opportunities for rezonings in the future. Um, if, if, uh, property owners, um, and planning staff want to, you know, see that type of development in a certain area.
Great. Thank you. Um, I did have a couple then code specific things that I saw in the packet today that just wanted to mention and, you know, I, uh, I don't necessarily have, I mean, I'd like to see them go one way or the other. I think I have an opinion on them, but doesn't mean that, you know, I, I'd want to hear feedback is really what I, what I'm looking for. And it doesn't have to be today if there's not an answer. But maybe the next time when we get into these topics, I'd really appreciate to know thought process and like why we're going a certain ways on certain things. One of the changes that was really critical I saw was the adjustment of the commercial floor area requirement of mixed use projects from fifty percent to seventy-five percent, which I think can be really beneficial in creating mixed use housing. But my question is, why is there a reason why we're keeping a seventy-five percent and not just maybe something like ground floor commercial and call it at that? And definitely if this is, you know, more appropriate for another time, you can just tell me, hey, let's talk about that at the next hearing on, you know, June thirteenth, eighth or whatever, you know, so.
We, we can talk about it more, but I, I just will say that it's, um, I think it's helpful to have a standard percentage wise, rather than dictating how commercial um, or residential is accommodated on a mixed use site. Sometimes, um, in our area and in other areas, I'm sure you know, we're talking about horizontal mixed use. And so, you know, it could be the one portion of a site that's residential and, um, uh, and so we, you know, we feel like it's important to maintain commercial. We didn't want to lose it altogether. There's plenty, plenty of, um, efforts at the state level to try to um, allow, uh, complete residential development in commercial zones. And we didn't want to go there. We, we think it's important for people to have services and, um, facilities nearby in their neighborhoods. We didn't want to lose it. But we also want to be able to provide some guidance, um, but not dictate, you know, we want, we don't want to be prescriptive about how they do it. So that's, that's a thought process anyway.
Understood. Yeah, I appreciate that, especially a horizontal mixed use. That makes a lot of sense, you know, in certain areas especially. Okay. I've read in a few spots, I just really want to clarify, is the commercial and mixed use zoning FAR only going to be one? And like all of those zones?
Um, I believe so. We'll definitely get into it more next time, but I'm gonna ask Annie if she has a thought on that.
One, one thing that you, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I can't see everyone, so I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I believe that's correct, but let me double check on that, Stephanie, and I can, um, yeah, report back in a moment.
Okay, and we'll be sure to, to address it in the next session.
Sure. Okay, that would be one area that I would really want to dig into. I just think that once you get to mixed use buildings with an FAR of one and a story limit of three or, you know, four plus of density bonus, those kind of things that you're taking what could be a lot of land and really squeezing down the building into a really short, tall building. And one thing you mentioned just a minute ago was that, you know, we want to make really good, efficient use of the small amount of land that we have. And so in my opinion, that can kind of open it up to more like parking style developments as opposed to housing or commercial mixed use style developments. And so I just want to point out that, that FAR might pose a potential challenge when we get to actually like creating developments based on that standard. My only thought there. Thank you. One other question here I had is the R1 designations as it relates to general plan designations of density. So, um, you know, we're, I think what we're saying is that we're going to transition from it's essentially going to be a density per lot instead of a zoning designation. Is that correct? So it wouldn't be like R15 and then an RUM designation. It would be like RUM for the general plan of seven point pre to ten point eight or whatever it is, units per acre. And then that would inform how many units you could put as opposed to having the R15 designation separately. Is that correct?
Almost. The, the general plan, um, as required by law since sets out the density requirements and, and we have made adjustments on the, um, uh, the range of density that could be in an R, R1 zone and any of the residential zones. But you still have the zoning designations and they still have minimum lot size designations and those do not go away. You still have to meet, meet both of those.
Okay, understood. So that they'll still work hand in hand. And we might see a different zoning density potentially if it doesn't then match the new urban or excuse me, general plan density.
Um, mostly for the residential flex zone, um, which we're establishing new, new uh, standards and density for, um, those. Uh, as I mentioned before, we really, uh, don't see new developments able to meet, uh, the highest density, uh, levels. So those, the standards in the zoning code are pretty important to kind of maintain and, and look at, and we'll, we'll spend more time next time.
Okay, understood. Thank you. I actually can now see Annie and her hand is raised. I'm not sure if you want, she wanted to chime in on that one.
Oh, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Gordon, I, you're correct. The, uh, flurry ratio for all the commercials on districts is one.
Okay. Thank you so much for clearing that up. I appreciate that. Transportation specific, I just wanted to know if in the future, if there's any opportunity for like bicycle parking strategies, things like that, if that's going to be kind of implemented in those plans, really promoting other forms of traffic other than, than, uh, just vehicular.
Oh, yes, we have a whole new circulation access and, um, mobility element that's really focused on multi modes of transportation, um, with all new policies and, um, that implement uh, active trans, the active transportation plan that was just, um, uh, adopted by the board as well as the new, um, street typology framework. And we'll get into that on June twenty-second, um, uh, that kind of, uh, creates, uh, complete streets using a, uh, framework that is, uh, we call it kind of a layered street framework where you can't every, because we have limited right of way, every street can't possibly accommodate everybody. And so you, um, we have a typology system, um, that will kind of label streets by their function to make sure that we're addressing all modes of transportation. And I would like to call on Anais Shank, who is our transportation planner and is the primary author of all of the policies and codes that we're going to review. And I, I can't see her on my screen, but I think she's here.
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
There she is.
Um, yeah, so Stephanie spoke to some of the policies that will be incorporating in the new access and mobility element, uh, which replaces, uh, what we formerly called the circulation element. We also have, um, some pretty substantial changes to the county code related to bicycle infrastructure, specifically bicycle parking. So there's going to be a huge increase in bicycle parking requirements, um, as well as allowances for vehicle parking reductions for providing more bicycle parking. Um, so we'll talk, as Stephanie said, in more detail about that on the twenty-second of next month.
That is great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um, cool. Um, let's see. I think that's all the main questions that I have. I'm really grateful for everyone's work. I know this is a lot to do and like, especially in light of the new Rena numbers, as you were mentioning, this is a lot to really add in and make sure we're, you know, taking it to that next level to meet those goals. And, um, yeah, great work. I'm excited to see the next phases and to really continue to dig in, so.
Thank you. It has been a ton of work. I know the staff really appreciates your, um, the commission's support in, uh, in this review. And we appreciate the feedback. That way we know what to focus on in the upcoming sessions a little bit. That'll be helpful. Thank you.
Great. Absolutely. Did any other commissioners have any final comments or thoughts before we close out on this item?
I'd only like to say that if they, there are any ideas of things that we could do individually to help you all as staff to both, you know, get the word out or highlight certain elements, um, of the project, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you very much. That, that would be helpful. If, um, if you all know of groups that we haven't reached out to or individuals we haven't reached out to, um, we can work with any of the commissioners or any of the district staff to, to provide more outreach. We, we feel like we've, we're tackling it in a big way, um, but, but as you said, if we can reach more people, um, and we will certainly let you know if there's anything that you all can do to support the project more. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. Um, any other commissioners? Otherwise, we can close this item out for the day and move on, so. Okay, sounds great. Um, with that then, I believe we can close our study session, uh, agenda item number six. I appreciate everyone again, and, uh, we'll move on to planning director's report for the today, today. Excuse me. Do we have a planning director's report today, Ms. Drake?
Yes, I see. We do have Matt Machado with us this morning. Good morning, Matt.
Morning and thank you. Thank you, Chair Gordon and Commissioners, uh, Matt Machado, your planning director. I just wanted to share a really quick update. Uh, we're in budget season and, uh, we're planning to present our budget about a month from now to the Board of Supervisors. And, uh, just, um, you know, one of the areas that, uh, we're really focusing on is staffing. And so today, uh, our planning group has about seventy-four people. Uh, but before the great recession, we had closer to a hundred. And that loss of staff through that great recession, which, you know, through attrition and, and, um, some forced, uh, cuts, uh, we've been down staff for, you know, it's been fourteen years about. And so our mission today is trying to invest additional resources uh, to not only just manage the current workload, which is massive and, and, um, and a bit overwhelming with the staff we have, which the staff we have are amazing. There are just not enough of them. Um, but also to be ready for the future. And so, you know, today's presentation and, and workshop was great. And you gave us all a glimpse of the future, uh, but we need to be ready to respond to that, uh, to serve our customers and our community. And so you'll see in our upcoming budget presentation that we'll be starting to focus on adding more staff with in our proposed budget, uh, we're proposing to add six new positions. And, uh, we plan to do that over the next couple of years to get our staffing levels at the right level to manage the work quantity. So I just wanted to share that with you all, uh, to keep you informed and, uh, knowledgeable. So that's it for my report and happy to answer any questions. But, uh, um, thank you for your interest in the update. And I want to thank staff for a good presentation today and a lot, a lot of hard work. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. That's really good to know. Yeah, um, it's tough right now staffing, I think, across the Alders, everywhere, you know, it's kind of tough. We're hearing in a lot of places. So good luck. I really hope that we can find the right people and help continue to grow your staff. I know it's challenging when there's not enough people to do the amount of work that's coming in. And these updates, I assume, are going to bring a fair amount more work. So best of luck on that. Um, and thank you. Um, any other commissioners wish to comment there before we move on to, uh, item number eight? Okay, great. Let's do that. Let's move on to port on upcoming meeting dates and agendas. We went over this a little bit, but Ms. Drake, did you have anything else to add?
Um, yes, we just wanted to, um, inform the commissioners that, uh, the next scheduled meeting date of June eighth. So far, we have, um, a reservation form for a, um, continued discussion of an appeal we had from back in, uh, I, it's been a couple of years, um, on Buena Vista, um, Road, the wireless facility. Um, that is on the agenda in addition to one of the study sessions as our policy staff, um, informed you of earlier. So we have upcoming, um, dates that we do expect to bring items to you for June eighth and June twenty-second. Um, and I also wanted to just quickly say that, um, at the next meeting on June eighth, I'll be, um, cross training Lizanne Jeffs and our um, department to fill in for me, um, on the June twenty-second meeting and then also the second meeting in July. And she, you all know Lizanne, she was promoted to principal planner a couple of months ago. And she is my, um, my co-manager in the development review section. So I'll be taking some vacation. And so you will see Lizanne this summer for a couple of meetings. I just wanted to give you some forewarning there. And that is all I have.
Hey, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
There.
Yes.
I actually, um, had an item, um, to add to our next agenda. Um, I've talked about this with, um, David Carlson. I think he's at this meeting. So I'm not sure if you all recall the C-Max TKD, um, project that came before our commission a couple of years ago, I believe it. I was going to say it was before the pandemic, but I, I can't say that for certain now. Um, I can't, it was a few years ago. Um, and that project is actually underway in Davenport. And there have been some, um, some reports of, uh, of dust that leaving the site. I'm not sure how much everybody remembers about the project and I can't really talk about it fully since I'm just wanting to put something on our next agenda. But I think the, from the concerns that I've heard from the community, what might be, um, a good way to approach it would be to ask if staff could return to our commission with a report, um, discussing the alleged permit violations, um, mitigations to correct them and other options for our commission should staff find that these violations occurred, um, and have not been remedied. And I think that, um, Mr. Carlson preferred June twenty-second. So, um, if that works for him, um, that works for, for me. If that is acceptable to the rest of the commission.
Yes, I think that would be fine with me. Um, could we get, um, would we get just a part of this added to the planning packet for that day? Or is there a way to get some of the information prior? So I can do a little bit of reading on on what, um, that last hearing was about?
I think that last, I think the meeting Rachel was one of the very first ones we had remotely at the very beginning of the pandemic, because I recall that one. Um, so it's been a couple of years. Yes. Um, and so. So it's been a couple of years. Yes. And so, so yes, Chair Gordon, you were not here then, I believe. So that was a good comment. We can provide some context and background on what the approvals are and, and the action that the planning commission took prior and then provide a report back as part of that that letter to the planning commission, I'm guessing is what we will probably be preparing. So we can do that. And that would be something we would provide in the packet.
Just to, to add, we could also, we could let the chair know which meeting it was so he could go back and review that packet and recording as well.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And let me just add one more thing. If staff feels that the issues have been adequately remedied, it would be fine with me if the report was just on consent.
Okay.
So I would leave that up to your discretion.
Got it. Thank you very much. And I did hear from David about that briefly this morning and I see he is on the meeting, so. Thank you.
Could I just clarify something about the request?
Sure.
Is it part of the request to have a written staff report on this? Or would a oral presentation suffice? I, I only say that because I'm going to be out of the office for a couple of weeks. Pretty close to the, you know, the due date for any written materials to be published for that meeting, so. And, and actually leaving this Friday for that, being out of the office. So I'll be out of the office for two weeks. So I could certainly do an oral, definitely do an oral report. Not sure how much written materials I'd be able to prepare before that meeting though. But I could definitely have something prepared for that meeting.
Yeah, that would be fine with me. But I think, yeah, we've, yeah.
Okay, I was envisioning a memo, but if a, an oral report is acceptable, that sounds, sounds great.
And I just, can I just make a statement? Stephanie, I know you mentioned sending it out to Chair Gordon, the date of that hearing, but maybe you could send it out to the entire board. So that even though most of this body was participated in that hearing, I think it might be good to remind them if they feel the need to go back and review since there won't be a written staff report.
Yes, absolutely. We can do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And one thing that might be helpful to add, to contextualize why I'm even doing this. David is to maybe attach some of the materials that we have both received and seen from the community. That would then explain why it is that I'm even asking for this, if that makes sense. Trying not to have a discussion about that.
Yeah, got it. Yeah. So we've received some email correspondence plus a homemade video from a resident. So I could try to provide that and explain you know, what are, what we've determined from looking into the, the complaint.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you very much, David. I appreciate your availability yesterday to have these conversations.
Oh, no problem.
Great. Yes, thank you, everyone. If there's no further discussion on that, then we can move to county council's report.
Good morning. Just wanted to say thank you to staff for the great presentation. I think we're all in for a very long and fruitful ride with this sustainability update. I know how hard they've been working so. And it's, you know, it's one of those things where we are looking to build more housing, housing and housing and housing is always coming up. It's kind of like the, unfortunately, like the serpent chasing its tail, right? We're, we need more staff to help us build more housing and, you know, to get more staff, we need more housing. So it's a, it's a tough predicament that a lot of jurisdictions are going or confronting right now. But I also wanted to just kind of cheer you on to figure out how do we get more public engagement? I think it's very important, kind of echoing what Commissioner Dan had mentioned at the, at the top of her comments. It's really hard to get the public engaged in these types of conversations, although these are the types of conversations that touch each and every one of their lives. So I really encourage you all to kind of think of some, some ideas of how we could broadcast this and get more folks engaged. But I just thank you all for your participation today.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Yeah, I think you know, we can start, like, I know I can start to promote this a little more in my personal interactions and make sure I'm reminding people that this is coming up and really important. And so I think, you know, little things like that can go a long way also. I appreciate everyone's input on that because it's really important to get as many people involved as we can right now, so. Great. Thank you. If there's nothing else, and that brings us to the end of our session for today, and I appreciate everyone's time and look forward to the next one. And if anyone has anything else, feel free. Otherwise we can close out for today.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Everyone has a great week. Okay, bye.
Bye.